Rather be here than outside in the warm, beautiful weather. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll call the work session to order and we'll let the minutes reflect that all of the board members except Mr. Quinn is here with us this evening. We have other members of staff. We've got a very radiant audience and we will get underway. We have the minutes of May 24th before us and I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move for approval of the May 24th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those minutes will stand approved as written. Month of reports for May, they are all in for the most part. As I look around the table here, I think those folks that are here are okay, so that's good. Those that may not have come in, I'm sure will be in by week's end. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest and I would ask Mr. Costello if he would tee up the first item under the guest.
Thank you, Tony. We have Beth Cross with us. Why don't you go ahead, Beth?
Welcome, Beth.
Hi.
Beth is interested in opening up a yoga studio at 2132 Five Mile Line Road. You're all familiar with the Trent Building. And I believe you're taking over an area on the second floor?
Yes, suite two.
And a portion of that area at one time was the gymnasium that you remember, that we had the issues with the noise and stuff being dropped on the floor. So she's taking that over, a portion of it anyways. And I'm gonna let you talk to the board a little bit about, you know, the scale of your business and hours of operation and people coming in.
Okay. The scale of the business would be, actually, I'm only gonna have probably a maximum of four people at a time because I'm primarily working with seniors. I'd like to specialize in seniors who may have some early onset, not early onset, but early stages of dementia and try to keep them focused as long as possible to maintain their quality of life. So there wouldn't be a lot of people. Yoga is a very quiet practice, so we won't be dropping things on the floor. Hours of operation, it's gonna be by point only just to keep it manageable and, because I actually have another business that takes up a lot of my time. So it'll probably be usual daytime hours and possibly some weekends. But if anyone comes in on the weekends, I would like walk them up and keep it all very, very contained and professional.
And how many days a week?
Probably maybe four. As my other business scales down, I might, I would probably increase the client load, but that's not gonna be for a few years.
Okay. All right. Signage?
You're probably gonna utilize the free standing sign.
Yeah, the free standing sign and there was a, you know...
And just put the panel on, put a panel in. Okay. All right. Very good. Questions, board? I think we're looking at this as a streamlined process versus a formal public hearing. There's some similar in nature type of operations as being proposed to what was there before, albeit quieter. And so, other questions or comments?
How many other people are working with you? How many people at a time?
Two to four. Yeah.
Do you have enough parking for that?
Yeah.
Two to four. And no retail sales out of there at all?
No.
Yoga mats, yoga clothes, no?
I have them available, but I don't sell them.
Okay.
Yep.
I think this clearly falls within the parameters of the streamlining process. It's really why we set it up a few years back. So I would support this moving forward.
Total square footage?
610.
I'm sorry?
610.
610 total. Okay. All right. Other questions or comments, board, that you might have? I might ask the staff, any additional items that you believe should be added to the record that are already not part of the record?
Well, I would recommend that you meet with the fire marshal, walk through the site and make sure that it's all code and compliance.
He was there on Monday.
Oh, you met with him already, correct?
Already did, yep.
Then the only other issue is working with our building department to get your sign permit.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
And when would you like this open?
Um, tomorrow.
That's why we got you ready.
Streamline process.
Can, can. The board will be sending you through me a permit.
Okay.
It'll be somewhat like a resolution, but it's a permit. And there will be a fee for the permit. It's a one-time fee and that's all you have to pay outside.
Okay. All right.
Great. Excellent. If there are no further questions, then look forward to a letter that will come from Mr. Costello on behalf of the board highlighting some of the things that we discussed and, like, getting the sign permit and making sure fire marshal and any other permits that might be required. And then you will be off and running.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Be well. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to action items and we have Vision Dodge additional parking, 920 Panorama Trail, Mr. Valentine. And we'll ask those members of Vision that would like to come up. Okay, so before Mr. Baker gets going, I think it would be just helpful, it's been a while since we did have a discussion, I think it was in the fall, early winter. And then, of course, folks, you know, hibernate for the winter and things like that. So, Mr. Valentine, would you take maybe just a minute or so, and just at a very high level, just kinda give a summary, if you will, and then we'll get into the main part of the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Superizer. This originally came before the planning board's sketch plan application. Originally came in as a sketch. The board started to look at it, had issued some questions, concerns on it. And then we had some pre-clearing. They got a little more clearing than what we had expected. A violation letter was issued for that. That's why I kinda reverted to this board here to one look at that violation issue. It is in a steep slope area. So depending on this board's thoughts and actions, it still will need further review by the planning board. You know, we'd look for a full version control plan, some geotech information, obviously details in more design. This is kind of the concept and looking to this board is, you know, you're supportive of something being in the steep slope area. And then also, you know, follow up on the clearing violation of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Mr. Edwards, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, just one last thing before we go on. We did receive this information today, so didn't have the opportunity to run it past PRC. So we don't have any feedback from PRC yet at this point, but Mr. Baker can run through it as well as Mr. Edwards and provide information for the board. And if PRC input is desired, we can, you know, follow up with that.
Fine. Okay.
Good evening.
Mr. Baker?
Good evening. I'm Walt Baker with DSP Engineers and Architects. With me tonight, Mr. Dan Edwards, Vision Group, and Mr. Mark Limpy. He's the general manager at 920 Panorama Trail South, the site in question. Everybody's familiar with the Dodge Jeep store right there across from Paychex. With that, if you've been down through that area, there's an area of the property, his property actually extends all the way back up the hill into the woods. And it's right adjacent to the New Hampton Inn. And if you recall, the Hampton Inn, that was in a similar situation where it was up on a steeper slope, a land through Panorama Trail. And the area we're looking at is similar to what was, what happened with the Hampton Inn. We do have a wooded area. We had our survey go out there and take topography of the entire site in question. And you can see that there's quite a few contours at this scale that vary. Once we get into this area where we show vehicles, what we're proposing to do is have an access point in our lower south corner, southwest corner. And what we'd like to do, Dan thought he'd be perfect to take inventory that he has to rent space off-site in another location and store the vehicles up in this area here. And Jeeps would be perfect venue on a slope with, kind of with a four-wheel drive and all that. It's that steep up there. In fact, the letter we got from the conservation board mentioned about making a profile of the section. So what I did was provide a section on the plan that shows that the area does come up. It's pretty much a one-on-two coming up through the steep sloped area. And then it actually flattens out, relatively flat. It's like a 5% plus or minus area through the center before it gets to the eastern side. And then it goes over the bluff, if you will, down towards around the Quay Creek, which is in the parkland down below. But it's quite a distance away. It's a similar situation, like I mentioned, with the Hampton Inn in sight where they developed, their property line stops and then it continues on. And the grading is at this point. And it continues up and then it drops over the slope. So there's been no erosion. Mr. Edwards did have a tree company go out there and remove some trees in the center. Attached in the letter, photographs that I took two days ago, which actually illustrate the growth that's up there. There hasn't been any erosion from the tree removal that took place last fall. So the tree removal was actually during October, November last year? I think it was October, October of last year. And what they did was thin out some of the trees that were just, basically, you see trees that are heavily grouped together. You end up with top growth and nothing down below. And then they, some of them have the tendency to get a little, a little weak through that area. So he had a guy go up there. There were some trees that did fall, so he had him clear them out and they took out a few extra ones. But there was nothing he took out on the steep slope area. Even though this is an EPOD steep slope area, the area up inside the property that's in question is, like I mentioned, about a 5% slope versus a 50% slope. So we're not proposing to do any work on excessively steep areas. We're just trying to limit it to what's actually usable without changing major parts of the topography. Years ago, we actually were in front of the planning board and we were requesting a sketch plan review for removing it, similar to what Hampton did, where we'd actually go in and put up a retaining wall and cut the hill down. But that was involving the steep slope area. And we didn't get much of a favorable response to that. So we went back to the drawing board and had the survey total of the area up even higher. And it's, like I mentioned, there's a couple spots in there that, we're not gonna park very many cars. We're looking at maybe 40 cars, 40 to 50 cars max. Previously, we were looking at about 92. But that involved that retaining wall idea. So we downscaled the intent of what we wanted to do. And unfortunately, he didn't have an EPOD permit when they took the trees down. So hence the violation. And that's why we're in front of the town board tonight. We would like to proceed with the planning board and the town staff as far as developing a plan that would be feasible, similar to what Mark was just mentioning. You know, we'll use a geotech engineer. We can get him out on site. He can verify the stability of the slope. Like I mentioned, we're not impacting the slope except for creating an accessway on his property up to where the flat area is. And also from the backside, we did have some DRC comments about emergency vehicles for a fire truck if they needed to get in there. And Dan has spoken with the Hampton Inn people and they're receptive to allowing us access from the top of their hill. So if you've been up there yet at the Hampton site, it turned out really nice again. But it was building on a steep slope and Panorama Trail is different than on flat land. But we're conscious of that and we'll work with the town staff to make it happen properly.
Staff, any additional comments? Mark, I heard that this just came in and PRC met today, so they have not had an opportunity to look at or comment.
Not on this updated information.
Got it. Board, questions or comments for the applicant at this point?
I'd be interested to see what PRC has to say about the updated, you know, just in fairness to the applicant. It gives us some feedback.
Okay. Other comments? All right. So it looks like the board is looking to have PRC take a look at this, which means that it will remain as a held item for this evening. We will next bring it before, and I would guess that you get it into PRC between now and the 28th and have some input feedback back to the board. Certainly, I would make sure that Mr. Edwards and Mr. Baker are aware of when that is, so that if they want to come in and listen to or answer any additional questions or comments, they certainly can do that.
Yeah, I'll check the PRC schedule, see if there's any other guests scheduled. Work with Mr. Baker on that.
Okay.
Invite them to come in. If we have no other guests scheduled next Wednesday, you guys have been in before, we can get them on the agenda.
Okay.
Have the discussion and then, you know, provide a memo back to the town board for consideration on the 28th.
That would be great. And then we'll also have the full board. Mr. Quinn is absent this evening. And I know that he had some interest in this property as well. So getting that report from PRC, I think will be good for the board and then we can take that up on the 28th. So...
Mark, are you also including that reporting from PRC or just generally from staff, violations and just the status of that as well?
If they'd like to meet up at the site prior to the meeting on Wednesday, if they can, they can arrange that. I'd be happy to meet them up there. And we can walk the site. We can access it very easily, like I mentioned, from the Hampton Inn side. As you can notice that in the photographs, I labeled it. So you can very easily get in there. And it's easily walked and manageable, if you'd like to walk and take a look for yourself. And you can see where the steep area is. Obviously, it's like a, basically a one-on-one. It's like a 50% slope, but that will stay in its natural state.
Okay. Mark, do you recall who the conservation board lead on this was?
I don't recall. And I see we'll obviously push this information out to them as well and make sure that they get a copy between now and then. The conservation board's meeting was just last week, so I don't believe they'll have another meeting before your meeting on the 28th.
I understand that, but dependent upon who the lead was and if they're available for PRC, it might be, it might be helpful to invite them to come to that as well.
Okay.
All right. Questions or comments from Mr. Baker, Mr. Edwards, or Mark?
Thank you for having us.
All right. So we'll have some communications back and forth. We'll look to reconvene on the 28th back here. And hopefully, some folks will have the opportunity to walk the site that maybe haven't walked the site.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, we'll see what it's like.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No worries.
Okay. That will take us to our next item, which is revision to Bay Landing Subdivision 1185 Empire Boulevard. And I'd ask Dr. Howitt if he would join us at the table. Welcome, Dr. Howitt.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you for bringing some nice weather with you. Okay, so I pulled out my notes for this, for this project. And so it was May 10th when Hans and Dr. Howitt were here to join us. We talked about a number of things. So there was traffic safety issues. We talked a little bit about the land that he was proposing to donate to the county. We talked about, you know, the 33 townhouse units. And that's where, just building the townhouse units, we're doing his business plan, were not affordable just to do that, based on all the cost and, you know, land costs and added cost overall. And what he was proposing at the time was two buildings, 36 total apartments, one with 21 units, one with 15 units, if I recall. And I made my notes properly. And I think the board wanted to kind of reflect on that. And I think we have the map here behind us. And then I would just ask Mr. Costello and staff if, is there anything additional or new since we got together on the 10th of May?
No, I think you clarified some of the issues that we talked about. And certainly, we had a couple board members missing and that's why we held off on taking any action. And I know that Paula was here, Linda was here, Tony were here.
Right.
I think Andy and Rapp were missing that night. So, you know, he did talk a little bit about the fact that the amount of infrastructure that was necessary to build the 33 units was more excessive than what he could do in terms of getting a return. Just getting to the 33 units off of Empire Boulevard was gonna be so costly, it wouldn't make sense to be able to build it as it was. Some of the things we talked about at that evening meeting was the fact that a small portion of where he's proposing the second building does not fall within the LaSalle's Landing District. It falls within the R-120 zone. And the staff recommendation that if the board were to move forward with the project, the staff was recommending that that portion of the property be rezoned to LaSalle's Landing so that all the project could be within the LaSalle's Landing out of the R-120 zone. The other issue is the former Picorres site at 50 Wilbur, Wilbur Track Road, where it's now owned by the Vella family. That property's been problematic for the staff and the boards recently because it's a previously non-conforming property. At one time, Mr. Picorres had his trucking company there, but current owners have been unable to really rent it to anybody or sell it because of its non-conforming staffs. And it may need some cleanup. I'm not sure of the situation at this point in time. But because it's zoned residential, it can't really be used for anything of any value in terms of a non-commercial nature until it's properly zoned. So those are the main issues that we talked about that evening. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think you've, you've summed it pretty much.
I did have conversations recently with Ralph Melio, who still expresses his support for the project. I did have a discussion the other day with Keith McPhail, who has some reservations and some concerns, but he wants to see how the project moves along. One of the things that he was pleased with was the fact that Dr. Howitt was offering to donate the land to the county, which is at the end of their street.
Right.
He even one time talked to me about the fact that he might wanna buy it to preserve it to make sure nobody hit anything on it. So he was pleased to hear that. And he's just, you know, interested in knowing where the board's gonna go with the application.
Do y'all understand that it's reverting to what the original application was that we did not support?
Well, they were concerned primarily about the 33 townhouses.
Right.
And they were really concerned to the previous application that Mr. Gellel had because Mr. Gellel was basically bunching the units up to the top of the hill.
Most problematic.
Blotting and using everything else. And I think that Dr. Howitt met with Mr. Melio and some others to see how he could kind of mitigate some of those issues. I was not part of the planning process.
I think there's also...
But you can talk a little bit about what the board experienced.
Yeah, I mean, this is, the 33 townhouses is currently a pending application before the planning board.
Right.
They had a public hearing last, I think it was March. And it's been a table met since then. There's some items the planning board's still waiting on, final wetland delineation, some geotech information. Obviously, the project's not going forward. I understand, you know, Mr. Howitt, you're not spending the money to put those in. But some of the earlier applications also had an additional, I think it was a three apartment building...
Third one, yes.
The third one that was wholly in the R-120 area. So I think this is scaled back from that. As I said, some of the concern of the neighbors was the look of the units and the style. The planning board is looking at that as well. You know, we've looked at the front, but based on the grades, it's kind of the, what is the back is what faces Empire Boulevard. So the planning board is still working with Mr. Howitt on the look of what is the back of the building, but what we'll see is from Empire as you come up, you know, Wilber Track Road is that look. Or the front, you kind of pull around to the backside of it. So they're working on that piece of it.
But what's before a planning board now would be not there if we went along with these changes, right?
No. What's before a planning board right now is just this piece right here.
Okay.
The 33 townhouses is what's before the planning board. These two buildings is what would potentially all fall within the LaSalle's Landing District. So this is before the town board. The planning board already came and came back to the board here with this drive access. This board was okay with that. This board also granted a waiver for one-sided sidewalks in this area. So that was kind of part of, planning board looking at that, it did fall within the LaSalle's Landing District. But the planning board is just looking at these 33 units right now with the transfer of this land up here. So this piece, you know, could go ahead simultaneously with this piece. Obviously, if it's all together, we have to look at...
And if we agree to what he's asking, it would go for a public hearing to...
You'd have to have a public hearing on this and then you'd have to look at the whole piece.
What you were saying, rezoning the property at the time, the lines.
Yeah, and that's the piece he's talking about, this piece right here, the R-120 line and the LLD line come up through here, kind of in a jagged form. This is the Vella property currently now that always acted as a commercial building that's in the R-120 zone. And then the portion of this building that kind of leaves an awkward piece here. So maybe some opportunity to kind of clean up some of these lines in this area. This isn't LaSalle's Landing, but if that's, you know, deed it off to the county parks land, that would, that would, you know, become their property in that case.
Yeah, Mr. Gellel came in initially with the planning unit report. That had three apartment buildings that deeply approached.
Like one, two here and the third one was...
They all approached.
This hill was the height of that was kind of some concerns, the view down. Mr. Howitt's been working with the planning board on stepping these houses down, preserving the views of the residents at the top of the hill. So, you know, it's not a three or four-story apartment building at the bottom. It kind of comes down the hill.
When you say on top of the hill, are you talking about on, like, Old Westfall Drive?
Yes.
Yeah, Woodhaven, for Melio.
Obviously, these homes would be wood. And the Woodhaven have the, you know, the best view from there. There's quite a drop-off to this.
Yeah, okay.
But the end of this drive access here, to make sure these homes, you know, still preserve their view.
And it's all within existing zoning?
Yes. Yeah, it's a cluster development. So it is single-family residential, but under our code. He showed a conventional plan that showed single-family houses laid out and all that, including that donated piece. Through that, you know, the planning board was looking at that was a benefit to keep that one piece that many people already think is parkland, is part of the park, or make it part of the park, which bred some, you know, additional density down below here. So then he's just showing those townhouses as a clustered, rather than, you know, trying to minimize impacts to steep slopes, wetlands, other...
What is the acreage potentially donated to the park?
I don't like to remember. It's off the top of my head, but just the acreage of this piece here, is it about six acres?
No, I think it's not quite that much. I think it's about...
It's a beautiful piece, though. Four, five, six acres?
Yeah, I mean, there's certain trails on it.
We looked at it. And that's the amount that shows on it.
Mark brings up a good point, is that's how they were transferring into the R-120 zone because they had the density for the project. It would be much cleaner if we could keep everything in the R-120, the R-120 and the LLD.
One of the difficulties in the LLD, it prohibits single-family residential. So actually up here, he was showing, you know, townhouses or mini apartment buildings on the end.
I wouldn't like that.
Which would not be a fear, but based on our code, you know, he couldn't show one or two single-family houses at the end. Kind of keeping with that, LaSalle's Landing prohibits that. So look at, you know, donating that, that kind of takes some of the neighbors away and then, you know, it's just consolidating into that.
Right.
One of the other things he offered was, listening to the neighbors concerned that they didn't want to see through access to Empire Boulevard from the project. He offered to, and of course, the staff is concerned for emergency access only. We don't want to see cut-through either. But we, after what we just experienced with the windstorm and everything else, we recognize trees do come down and if they get blocked in there, they can't get out. There's gotta be a way for them to get somewhere out of that project. The neighbors off of Westwall and the others getting down through his property, he's offering to put in a geo-grig type system where it looks like grass and it'll be carried, gated off and everything, just used during emergency.
And they like that up there?
Their support. I think they don't want to see the access road through, but they are supportive, recommending that we have to have something.
Yeah, I don't think...
It's for their benefit.
As long as it looks like grass.
Now, I remember that conversation with them.
Yeah. So I, you know, I think we're to a point now where I think the project has gained some support in the neighborhood. This is a new portion of the project now that they're not aware of yet. And the question is, do you want to consider a public hearing to look at? Or even, I think we even talked about possibly a public confirmation meeting back in May.
Which minimized, there was sufficient work that was done here. It didn't require any additional engineering work, similar to what we've done with a couple of projects. I think Barclay, Barclay comes to my mind and a couple of others. And it gives an opportunity for the neighbors to come, comment for or against, and without Dr. Howitt having to spend any additional dollars to do a formal hearing before the planning board or before the town board.
Yeah. I think I'm supportive of that, going to the information meeting.
Do we have any renderings or any potential visuals of what these would look like?
Is it parking in the building or parking, is it surface level parking?
It's surface level.
Surface, surface parking.
Site is a little constrained. And we went out and looked at it. And I looked at other possible ways to lay it out and I'm not sure you...
I looked at other possible ways to lay it out and I'm not sure you can. There's just a certain amount of area you can utilize. He is adjacent to a steep slope. It's quite high and I don't think you're going to be able to encroach into that area anywhere other than how it's laid out at this point in time.
And what did PRC say?
PRC really hasn't reviewed much of anything yet. It's kind of been dormant until you had a chance to look at it, until all the board members had a chance to look at it. I think in terms of the technical stuff, it's going to be, you know, have to deal with the issues the planning board's dealing with right now with domination of wetlands, making sure stormwater management isn't properly maintained. The types of improvements that would need to be done to Hoover Track Road as part of the project. And preservation of steep slopes.
Right. Well, it will be down below.
Mark, if you wouldn't mind just going back to the original site plan and then just maybe for Andy's benefit, because as I look at my notes, Andy was the only one that was not here when we met on the 10th of June. And maybe just kind of highlight where the two buildings are, the associated parking. And then, because it's kind of hard to see from here, again, if you would, just identify where the line cuts from that point, if you would.
Yep, just as a recap, I'd say these 33 townhouses is what's currently a tabled matter before the planning board right now. There was a public hearing on this, probably March of last year, that's been tabled since then. These are the two proposed buildings. Mr. Howitt is asking the town board to consider a public information meeting on now with the associated parking with those on that. This is the LaSalle's Landing Zone line comes through here. So it currently would split part of this building. This is the Vella property that's behind that. This is the, this hatched green portion is the portion that he's proposed to donate to the county park system, which would take that development off of the top of the, the mall, off of that and would consolidate all the development down into the lower area.
And Mark, has the county parks department indicated support for accepting that land?
Yeah, we had initial conversations with them. They wanted to go out and walk it. Obviously, it's directly contiguous to property that they already own.
Pollution more in parks.
Similar to the town, you know, they wouldn't want to take a random little piece in nowhere. But there are, and we've walked it before, there's trails on it already. I think many people assume it already is part of the county park system. There's pathways through it, but we did have some initial conversation with the county about...
Had a conversation with the associate director of county parks, who said they'd be very happy to have it.
Okay.
This was probably after your conversations he called.
Dave, Dave Rinaldi? Was it Dave, Dave Rinaldi?
Rinaldo.
Or Rinaldo?
Larry. Larry Staub. But I did talk with Dave initially about it and brought that up as, at that time, we were looking at a couple of different possibilities with Manitow Lake and some other pieces. So there was conversations back then and, you know, they must have followed up additionally.
And that scenic over... Just as a point of interest, from the end of Woodhaven, the circle out there, there's some easements that go through the areas back there that connect from Woodhaven to that piece. Those of course would be abandoned as well if the county wished to.
Woodhaven or Old Westfall?
Old Westfall.
Oh, Old Westfall.
Old Westfall, okay.
Yeah. That is a pretty scenic overlook. Mark and I, we walked up there for the...
Open space, we walked it. There's a little scenic overlook at the end that kind of comes out.
Nice spot.
Even wide enough.
It's called the beautiful view. Seriously.
I know.
That's what the kids called it for years.
I believe it.
Yeah. I remember being up there when I was young.
Really?
Yeah.
It was my neighborhood.
Knew a family that lived right up there on Old Westfall.
Okay, so, Board, what I thought I heard, Lynda, that you were supportive of going to a public information meeting to give folks an opportunity to come in and speak for or against, you know, the application.
And you? Yeah? Information.
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to go to a public information meeting. You know, I just think it needs to be stated very clearly that the town is not taking a position on this. We're not supporting it. We're not going against it. It's a chance for the applicant and the residents to come together and see what is being proposed. Just as long as that's made very clear. I do have, personally have reservations with what is being proposed down there, but I'm certainly willing to take it a couple steps and see what might work or what might not work. But for the record, I do have some reservations for what's being proposed.
Well, I do too, because it's going back to something that we already said no to. But now that, you know, you're looking at the whole picture of what's going on with the planning board and not willing to see how it could all work out.
Yeah, and I think it's only fair to the residents in the neighborhood that they get, you know, an opportunity to see what is potentially being proposed.
Right.
And, you know, to learn as much as they can about it from the applicant, not hear rumors or things along those lines and then, you know, get their thoughts on it. I think that's only fair to them.
One of the things we didn't bring up to you, but we did talk about it the last meeting, was the fact that the staff is recommending to the town board at some point in time here, the creation of another new applet we did out of Route 250 and Route 41 for traffic management.
Yeah.
We have talked to Dr. Howitt, we've talked to basically everybody who wants to develop on that road, and they're all supportive of contributing to that effort because they understand that something has to be done to make that safer through there. So we will be coming back to you with something. As I say, we would require development to contribute to that effort so that we can at least get another middle turn, a middle turn lane down through the middle of that street as we did for the apartment complex just north of it. The other thing too is the state, Tony and Mark and I and Eric have met with the state DOT recently. They're indicating that they're going to be doing some improvements to Empire Boulevard that would allow for us to be able to do some of the things that we need to do over a period of time. So that was good news. So there are some little nuances that are different than there were the last time because I know the board was very concerned about traffic safety and getting access onto Empire Boulevard.
Traffic safety still is, I mean, is number one. There is no question about that.
So, just another effort.
But it's always the catch 22, right? I mean, you have to get enough development to catch their eye to allow...
That's right. That's it. You've got to, you've got to be able to meet their warrants in order to get the improvements that you need. But the way it is right now, it's never going to get those warrants.
No.
So, Dr. Howitt, all I would say again is that what you have prepared is sufficient for a public information meeting. It's not a public hearing, but a public information meeting. I'm always very sensitive that every time you engage an engineer or an attorney, the meter runs, and so I'm always very sensitive to that. So there's no need at this point to go out and do more than what you already have with this site plan. And you can work with Mr. Costello and Mr. Valentine, and we'll get something set up for a public information meeting here sometime over the next couple of months. And again, we want to be sensitive certainly to people on vacation so that folks don't feel that we're trying to hold a meeting when everybody is away on vacation or what have you. So we also want to be sensitive to that.
Right.
Board, other questions or comments?
Nope.
Staff, other questions or comments that we should add as part of the record?
I think Ralph said it.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Good. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
We will move on to item C, conditional use permit at 1771 Penfield Road. We held a public hearing here two weeks ago, and this is just a follow-up from that. So, Mr. Costello, anything new to report beyond the public hearing?
No, just to recap, and I think you've done a pretty good job of that already, but just to recap of the business, we had two full-time employees on site, six days a week, eleven-six, 20 to 30 patrons per day. They're going to need to meet with Mark and Michael to redevelop the parking area and make sure it meets what we need to do in terms of coming into Mott's Lane. They're going to have to get a DOT permit to upgrade their driveway. They're going to have one sign on the building, one sign out the front per code. And the big thing, I think, is the staff working with them to see if we can make a trade in land so that we can pick up the land behind the property to extend Mott's Lane as possible and then allow them to have, with that in the right of way, so that we don't have to maintain that portion of the right of way.
Absolutely.
And he is willing to do that.
Sounds good.
And most important, that property will really get cleaned up. And brought, that whole stretch has really done a great job of cleaning up and rehabbing Penfield Trophy's. Certainly, the old center house has really done. We approved that oral surgeon at the old Realtor spot. That whole area has really started to come around. And then, of course, Dalton's, you know, recently, so. Okay, so Jim, you'll put a resolution together for next Wednesday?
I will.
All right. Other questions, comments, boards?
Real quickly, Mr. President, will that resolution kind of detail out what we think or what we expect them to do as far as property upkeep or renovations?
He did indicate he wanted to re-size the building and do some cleaning up, some landscaping. We will identify those aspects.
Yeah, because I want to have some accountability there that, you know, just because he says he's going to do all this stuff and then once he gets approved, nothing happens.
So we will take care of that. We will also, when we get a final design of the parking area and the potential layout for property layout, we'll bring that back to you so you can look at it. Or at least get it to you email-wise so you can copy it if you'd like.
What's important to me is the accountability part of what he said in holding them, making sure that some of those improvements get done. As you just said, you know, to make that whole area better than what it is today in the past, it needs that improvement done to it. And I would expect him to do that.
We'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. We'll move on to item D, conditional use, 1387 Empire Boulevard. Mr. Costello, I think you've got some new information on the side of...
I had a chance to meet with the applicant as late as this afternoon in talking to him about, I think the board had some concerns about how the process would work to get people safely across that street, particularly towards the end of the evening. And he tended to agree, and I think he had some time to think about how it would possibly work. And even he suggested that it probably would not be in his best interest to try that at this time. He's going to, he's had, he said he's had a pretty good spring in terms of not having problems, and he anticipates that'll be the case for the rest of the summer because of what's happening with the water levels and everything else. But he indicated he's going to watch and see how it works. If it works all fine, he's not going to come back to you. If it becomes a problem, he may come back to you with a better plan as to how he could handle it. But at this point in time, he's indicated he doesn't want to move forward.
Well, and if I, you know, understanding what he said, it doesn't seem like those parking issues are there every single night.
No, that's correct. And he didn't want to do it every night, but he was really looking for the holidays, the three big holidays during the summer. And then if there was a big event or something at Basil's that was going to overtake his parking area, then he would be concerned about that.
Sure.
But I don't think it's worth his effort at this point in time to deal with.
Okay.
Okay, we'll show that as withdrawn. That will move us to information items. So hot off, hot off the trail of being stormwater managed for the last three days, Mr. Valentine to tee up, and of course, Mr. Tate to tee up town design criteria specifically as it relates to low-pressure sewers. And we thought it was important that they spend a couple of minutes to talk about this as they're in the process of updating the town's design criteria. This is something that we haven't had a lot of experience with, but something that, you know, we have experimented with. And I think it's just good that Eric and Mark give us a kind of an update on things. So with that, Mr. Stormwater Manager?
You left the exciting stuff.
Lots of floodplains. Lots of floodplain conversation, but that's for another day. Yeah, I just wanted to come and kind of update the board. Obviously, the board knows we've been working on our town design criteria, we're looking at all of our details, our codes for roads and everything else. Wanted to update them that's becoming more popular in the industry is low-pressure sewers. Most people know them, it's kind of like saying Kleenex versus tissue, but E1 is kind of the mainstream individual sewer ejector pump for each house. So each house, rather than in areas that are not serviceable by gravity sewer, you'd have an individual grinder pump out in your front yard, in a tank area. Eric's got some sketches of that, and I can let him describe more of the system. But you kind of have your own individual unit that pumps out to a main in the street. So we are looking at first educating ourselves a little bit more about it. We do have one system in town currently. It's only been in service about a year and a half. It's been working fine so far, but we haven't ventured into some of these larger systems. So most recently, we met with MRB, a design firm that's done several for lots of communities all over Western New York. And then most recently, Eric and I and a few others went out to Wayne County Water and Sewer Authority. They are on the maintenance side of it, so to kind of see on their end, what are the issues, what are the concerns? You know, they had some, you know, things definitely to look out for and ways to, you know, make sure you get it done right and is all things construction and installation are critical as part of that. So just kind of wanted to update the board that we are looking at this. This seems to be kind of the up and coming area, or at least in areas that are undeveloped in Penfield. We're kind of running out of areas of gravity sewer in a lot of parts of town, so this is becoming more and more prevalent. So we're working on the details. I'll let Eric show a little bit more about the system and how it all works.
You know, as Mark kind of alluded to, it's similar to an exterior sun pump before the sanitary sewage. So each house would have their own pump or have a pump for that given property and the maintenance associated with it. The E1 is just one model and one brand. It is fairly trustworthy and reliable. We've not had any known problems with the one system that we've got now. However, it is on a fairly small scale. As we've mentioned, we've did go out to and spoke with Wayne County and Water and Sewer. They're implementing some of these more to help clean up the bay and kind of keep those bleach fields and septic systems along the individual bays and lakes and whatnot to help with the pollution. Fortunately, we don't have that issue, so that's not why we would necessarily be looking to implement these. But they are an alternative to provide sewers to areas that currently don't have them or would be difficult to install gravity sewers.
So is this like an opportunity in the criteria? It's not saying that...
Correct. We don't have anything right now. And, you know, depending whether we want to look to potentially allow these or not, we just want to make sure we're ahead of it and, you know, have some criteria to hold developers against if we look to accept them.
Sounds appropriate.
Want to make sure we standardize everything, so if the lines need to be flushed, we have a standard fixture that, you know, the sewer guys got to go out and they flush all the sanitary sewers, so it's not any different than that. But to make sure the fixtures are same, one-to-one, every connection is the same, so there is a, you know, a standard for developers. If they were to install them, this is how you do it. This is exactly what we need. You know, go out there and it's slightly different, or somebody used a different style or a different connection, and then it becomes, you know, more of a maintenance issue.
Sure. Because it uses somewhat of a combined forced main that all of the houses then pump to, the forced main itself and the pipes tend to be smaller than what our equipment currently allows for with our routine flushing for gravity sewers. So by being able to somewhat standardize everything and make it so that we can just pull up to a site, hook on to a line or a pump, and be able to flush it and unclog whatever may be blocking the line, it would certainly help expedite and prevent further damage.
One of the things this will precipitate is obviously some of the properties that we're looking at are in the R-1 zone. So there are developers looking to use, utilize this type of system because right now they'd be on septic systems if they did. And what they would then do is try to quench down the loss, meeting the code requirement for the number of units they'd be allowed to have on that site, which is fine, but you will have some remaining parcels left over, some very large parcels. And I think we're going to wrestle through, you know, what happens to those parcels and how we deal with them as part of the process.
So on the other side, 250 is kind of...
No, I think, you know, I think the staff understands the board's position on development on Route 250. We have told everybody that you're not doing that on the east side of 250. So that's not the issue. But it's some of the infill properties that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years, Jackson Row, a couple of others, Plank and those areas to work at. This gives them that opportunity now without having to put in large pump stations and have higher density. As they've come to you in the past, they don't need that anymore. They can meet the code requirement now for density. But they'll do it on smaller lots because now they don't have to have a large septic area to take care of in terms of expansion area and that type of thing.
So let's walk through, you know, I hate hypothetical situations, but I think it's important while we're having this conversation so that we all fully understand this. So let's say we take the area of the corner of Plank and Jackson Row. Today, there are no sewers that are there. The sewers are a ways away, depending upon what direction you go. If you go north, you've got some issues with capacity in Webster. If you go west, you can tie into sewers that, you know, do have capacity today. If you go south, you've got some sewers up to Penfield Center Road or maybe a little bit further. So I've got 50 acres, one acre zoning. I built 50 homes. Each one of these homes has this unit that they're responsible for. And so if a unit goes bad, that's really on the property owner, homeowner, and got a plan no different than a furnace or a hot water tank. The thing dies, I get a new one. What is that rough expense for that?
Per lot for a given unit?
Yeah, per pump?
I know a pump itself, the initial cost to a resident would be about $5,000 for the pump and the enclosure.
Okay.
The pump typically has about a 10-year lifespan, give or take. A replacement pump is simple to pull out and drop a new one in, and a replacement pump is about $1,800.
Okay, so two grand.
If, yeah, if the, if it were a simple fix, the pumps are able to be pulled out, and they're not necessarily just thrown away, they can be...
Rebuilt.
Rebuilt and reused.
Okay. So I get, in this scenario, we've got 50 units. They've got their individual, you know, grinder units or grinder pump stations. And I'm assuming you need one per lot. Where does the sewage go from there?
Right now, we're looking at taking it back towards Shoe Craft Road. So we run down Plank Road back towards Shoe Craft where we have the most capacity going to the west. So the developer at their cost would install a force main down Plank Road, size such that they could accommodate these 50 units plus some additional capacity for others that they could tie into that as well.
Okay.
We would then own the main as we would any other force main, gravity main, have spots where you can clean it, flush it from there. Basically, it's shown on the maps here, people have from their cleanout back to their house, same as a gravity lateral or a water service. You are responsible from your cleanout back to your house, including the pump is the homeowner's responsibility. From the cleanout forward, the street, the main, once inspected and approved by the town, the sewer district would, you know, take that over and maintain that like any other sewer.
Got it.
But not every, not every development between, say, Jackson Road and Shoe Craft could tie into the system if they were to build...
I mean, we would have to look at that drainage basin and...
A lot of it would be dependent on the hydrology and the hydro study to see if it were upsized to accommodate that, if it would cause problems before other properties were to tie in.
Yeah, I would think there are some issues that you could size it for 50. You might be able to size it for 65. But if you size it for anything more than 65, you may have some, you may have some issues.
The whole concept is that you want to, with these systems, you want to keep the kind of sewage moving through at a minimum velocity of two feet per second. Anything slower than that, the solids start to settle out, the grease builds up, and which causes backups and blockages.
Yep. Okay, all right. So, no, so what I was going to say is that, so as we see the updates coming forward for the design criteria, a new section is going to have some low-pressure sewers. And we'll see something along these lines or something similar to this. Again, specked out with standard fitting sizes, et cetera, that could be used. And then, we've got some things in our design criteria that are what I'll call standard. And there are some things that, if I recall correctly, do require special review by the town board. And would this be kind of a standard item, or would that be something that...
We would bring all the design criteria back to the board and run through it similarly we did with the code. Most of the other sections are kind of tweaks and updates. This is kind of a new section for us. That's why we kind of want to highlight it to the board. This is something new we're looking at. We're tweaking a detail here and updating for new materials and doing some other stuff. We'll bring all those items back to the board, run through the changes. You know, we'll make it available for the public comment review before any adoption.
But I think what he's asking is, would the board have to have, give you approval, give the planning board approval to utilize this type of system in order to...
I mean, that's, I mean, obviously, it's not an action item tonight. It's just information. But that's something we can come back. If we adopted this as a standard acceptable practice in where to septic or gravity sewer, it could just be another tool in the toolbox. You know, if it came along and, you know, it was a standard by the book, by the zoning. And if it was adopted, you know, it could be just another tool for the planning board to utilize.
All right. And then my last question, Mark and Eric, is so, you know, when it's new and everything's working great and what have you, but were there any, were there any watchouts or concerns when you spoke with either MRB or with the Wayne County folks that, you know, raised any concerns in your mind?
Obviously, first and foremost is the power outage. These are electrically powered units. I mean, normally with a gravity sewer, you flush the toilet. Gravity works whether the power's on or not.
Right.
So one of the items and one of the things we would have in the spec is it would have an outside electric panel. We'd make sure that it was able to be connected directly, whether the property owner had a whole house or a portable generator they could plug in, run the unit for, you know, a couple of minutes. It would flush out the system. There is a holding tank in it. So there is typically between two and eight hours of capacity for the unit. So if the power did go out for a short period of time, it has some storage. Power came back on, it would, you know, flush itself out. Or, you know, that's part of the design criteria working through is a requirement that it would have connection ports for a generator. So either the homeowner or the town, if need be, or somebody could come along, connect in, run it for five minutes, that unit would flush out, go on to the next one, and, you know, would work with that.
Don't put that in your design criteria. We've got our EPW guys six ways to Sunday now.
But as far as the...
Just have any... Make sure there's a standard connection there for it, so it's as simple, you don't have to unwire it.
Plug a generator.
Jerry rig something.
Yeah. Middle of the night, and somebody's trying to wire it up to a...
Car battery.
Car battery in that situation. Some of the other concern is if there's not enough flow and it's too low of a system. And this was some of the concern on some of the bays, that they're more of a seasonal item.
Oh, sure.
Is some of the odor that can be there. There are some additives that they have. It's a dosing system along the way that it adds bioxide that helps to kill that off. These, you know, would be year-round homes. I don't think they'd be the same concerns. They had more concerns when it was, you know, seasonal only. They try to work with a resident at the end of the season to make sure you're fully flushed out your system, run some extra water, try to make sure they flush the whole line out that once summer's over and if people aren't in their summer homes anymore, it's not just sitting stagnant along. But other than that, I think they said they've had seven to 10 years of lines in service. They've never had to flush them to date.
Minimal maintenance, a few pumps that have, you know, had little quirks here and there. But even then, you know, they've standardized the E1 system. And with some of the issues that they've had, the suppliers actually come back and said, you know, "We realize that, you know, this is an issue. It may be an issue on all of the pumps. We're going to come through and just swap out all of the pumps, change all, you know, whatever part is a neighborhood recall, essentially, to prevent it from happening to any others."
Okay, good. Thanks. Thanks for the research on that, guys. That's good. And, you know, another, we've got to stay current with technology and certainly keep our eyes open to those new options that might be out there overall. All right. We'll move on to 2164 Fairport, Nine Mile Point Road, Jeremiah's request for music. Mr. Costello?
This is an FYI to you. I did receive an application for them to apply for a permit, outdoor music permit. They did, unbeknownst to me, they did actually apply for two permits in 2016 for outdoor music between the hours of four and seven. I think that's what they're looking for them. We had no complaints. It was all acoustic. It was not...
Acoustic guitar?
It was not amplified, and they were happy with that. So Andy did give me the dates that they occurred. I will provide that to you when they finally make their applications. They have made the application, but the public hearing will be held technically scheduled for the 19th of July. And before that, I'll get all the information to you as to what was happening.
Before, before this board?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a conditional use permit before this board. And that's not going to issue. So recognize the sensitivity that you've had to deal with and the neighbors. Certainly, we will make sure everybody's notified, as we did before, to the higher area. I think Lisa and I went to 1,500 feet instead of the 500, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll continue that process.
Yeah. All right, very good. Any other questions on that, Board? All right, that's our last item. We have nothing else before the board. So the June 14, 2017 work session will stand adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thank you to Board, thank you to staff, Lisa, thank you as always, and our audience, the big audience that is still left ahead, thank you.